Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, and welcome to our North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Libel.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here. Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes. It will be just as is in front of you. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Libel. All in favor, or any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda carries. Item four is a pretty lengthy consent agenda, and there was a couple of questions about items on there, but otherwise, are there any things that you want to pull off or talk about? Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Smith. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Move to item five, which is time for public comment, and this is time reserved for anyone in the audience wishing to address council on something that's not already on the agenda, and try to limit our comments.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Artie Stoner, and this is actually just some paperwork. I wanted to make sure each of you had a chance to get ahead of the meeting in two weeks. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to drop it off personally, you know, put a face to the information I'm bringing you. So may I?
You sure can, Artie. Thank you.
Anyway, I wanted to leave all these with you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your consideration and your hard work and all you do to this day.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, too.
Is your new information about your pay changes on the current calendar for today?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
There's an agenda packet right back there on that back shelf, if you'd like. You're welcome. Oh, and by the way, we will not have this agenda item on the 28th. It'll be that first meeting in November.
Hope so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, I'll move on to item six, which is our engineer's report, Josiah.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to update you guys on a quick design project, the Aquatic Center acoustic panels was approved for this budget year to be designed for replacement. That work will start in January, coordinated with rec staff. It'll be a competitive co-project, and they're targeting August for that work. So that's the lull between when the pool is really high use in the summer and before they start their fall. So we're anticipating they'll have to drain the pool for a couple of weeks to do that work in the ceiling. So that's getting underway. Construction phase, North Liberty Road Trail, the contractor is on the punch list items of cleaning things up. We did a follow-up walkthrough today to see where they're at. They're about 75% complete with their current list, and they've got about 10, 11 days left in their window to get that done. There's two projects that were already on the agenda for approval, but both the West Penn Street and Prever Green Road projects are complete and wrapped up. So I usually have an update on Centennial Event Center, but I think a lot of you were there, so they're getting close and working on punch list items there as well. So another project getting wrapped up. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions for Josiah? Get off the hook tonight. Ryan, city minister's report.
Thank you. I just have actually a few dates for you to jot down. The first, and I'm sure you already all have this, and this is for the benefit of the listening public as well, but next Tuesday, starting at 10 o'clock, we'll have ribbon-cutting ceremony out at Centennial Park for the aforementioned Hy-Vee Centennial Center. We had an informal showing tonight for some of the donors and look forward to hosting a community event next week. As I said, I'll start at 10:00, and then it'll actually run through 1:00, so we'll have some entertainment out there, as well as just a general open house for people to walk through. So hope to see you out there. Also next week, although a day earlier, on Monday, the 20th, there is a joint entities meeting at the Iowa City City Hall. I think you all have that on your radar. Just a reminder that they're still accepting agenda items for that up until tomorrow afternoon. So if you have something you want on the agenda, let Tracy or I know, and we'll make sure and pass that along. And then finally, I believe you received some information from our community relations director about Greater Iowa City's annual meeting coming up November 20th. If you're interested in going, the city does have a table, so let us know so we can reserve you a seat. It should be a good event. Those usually are, and we'll certainly save you a seat if you're available. That's what I have tonight, Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Ryan?
Did you say you will be entertaining at the Centennial?
I did not say that.
Good clarifying question.
There will be entertainment. I will not be that.
And that is open to the public?
Yes.
Everyone's welcome.
Everyone's welcome.
Fantastic.
Any other great questions?
Item eight is mayor's report. I just have a couple of dates to put out there. Some rewind, actually, for me. A couple of days after our last council meeting, I'm the MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization representative for Johnson County on the Eastern Iowa, East Central Iowa Community of Governance, and we have a monthly meeting. So in that meeting, which is once a month, Karen Kurt, the director of ECI COG, announced that she's retiring. Actually, she announced it the last month, so we still hope to get the planning session in here. She's not retiring until May.
Good.
So if she hasn't reached out to you already, she will be soon. The following day, we had a JEXA meeting, which is the Joint Entities Communications Advisory Board, or Service Advisory Board, runs the dispatch center for Johnson County, and we have quarterly meetings or so. And I've mentioned this in the past, but the Iowa Legislature changed the rules a little bit on how 911 funding would be distributed throughout the state, and it was, we estimate that that's going to take about a $200,000 bite out of the JEXA budget, which is just a tax asking that goes back out to the county and it comes back. But in relation to the budget, the county, or the JEXA has about a $4.7 million budget, so this is $200,000. That'll be missing out of that, or it'll have to be asked in additional tax asking. So just an idea to see what is happening, dollars and cents, from policy decisions at the state level. Artie is here tonight. I would encourage you all, Ryan has already suggested, to go out and watch last week's P&amp;Z meeting. Artie made a fantastic presentation, great discussion out there. It was lengthy, but I'm glad that she was here tonight, but also familiarize yourself with that. This will not be on the agenda, though, for two more meetings, so you've got some time. So plan around that. And then lastly, Ryan and I attended an Alliance Energy Leadership meeting yesterday up in Marion, and just a handful of communities that were there, not a handful, all of those in the area that Alliance serves. And one of the big takeaways that I had is how involved Alliance can be for economic development purposes. As we're talking with businesses, as we're developing our communities, their role in those conversations has been helpful. Ryan has an example of that just a couple of years ago, and they kind of reiterated that again yesterday. So thank them for their partnership, and when it comes to economic development here in this corridor. With that, I'll move to item nine, which is council reports, and this is a time I reserve for council members to let the public know what they're doing on our behalf when they're not sitting in front of you here at a city council meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you to Hy-Vee and Fairway, and then actually Big Grove helped, too, for the shop for Sheldon for the DVIP. So a lot of people were, when we were going the other day to the store, they were there, and a lot of people had donated stuff that you could see out there and stuff. Thank you to the Quail Creek area for inviting me to their block party and stuff. So I did get the chance to go, and they had like a live band, which is apparently just people who live in the area, and they were actually sounding pretty good. And I got my Halloween decorations up, but they pale in comparison. And then I stopped out at Centennial this evening here, and it's really impressive facility. So when people get a chance to go out there, maybe the next opening and stuff, and just take it to our vehicle.
Same, Mayor. Went out to Hy-Vee Centennial Center this evening. Appreciate all the hard work. Actually enjoyed talking to Jillian about her excitement about the Halloween party that will be kind of the grand opening and testing of the facility. It sounds like a lot of fun. If you have not bought tickets, there are tickets still available, but I just listened to her talk. We were considering, I think the Mrs. and I now absolutely will be there. It's going to be an absolute blast, so I can't wait for that. As a board member on Think Iowa City, again, very excited this last week to see Savannah Bananas coming to Kinnick, and I will be working North Liberty into that large event that will be July 3rd and 4th. So a lot more to come on the planning phases of that, and I'm sure many of our local partners, staff, and council will have opportunities to partake and participate in that event. So more to come on that.
Thank you. I didn't go back through my calendar, so I don't recall exactly everything I did the last time, since the last time I was here.
You were in the field a lot, I can only imagine.
I was, yeah, I mean, I was out at the Hy-Vee Center this evening, too, and I'm excited about that, and have already purchased tickets to the Grave Rave, so I guess I'm ahead of everyone else. It should be a good center for us.
I learned a lot at the Johnson County Jail diversion program meeting that they had in Iowa City. You know, it's about a lot of different programs Johnson County does that try to, you know, assist people and have different ways to avoid just straight going to jail. There is a paramedic aspect to that, which, you know, I didn't know that, you know, some people, you know, give a call to fire or police, you know, to get some help with some medical issues. So the fact that they can use paramedics to help with some of those situations is saving money and time for folks. Also, I attended the Greater IC Lunch at the fire station, and Chief Platts did a wonderful job, you know, explaining some of the challenges we have over there with the fire station. So, you know, just another plug for everyone to vote yes for the local option sales tax to help us, you know, get that remodeled and, well, deciding what we do, you know, taking down or get that, get those issues addressed over there. And then I attended a communication board installation ceremony at Penn Meadows. That was courtesy of Sensory Kids in Hills Bank. So thanks to them, and those are, you may have seen them at the Centennial Park Playground, where they generously donated handicapped equipment for that. And anyway, those do a lot to help every kid be able to enjoy the playgrounds, and so thanks to them, and thanks to Guy for, you know, considering that going forward with some of the other playground stuff that we have. And then I just have to mention how beautiful our water tower looks. The before and after from that was amazing, so it's great to see our drone at work, and it, that thing was shining bright white. It looked really good, so that's what I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm going to leave the shining bright comment for something else, but.
My head.
Mine simply just focused primarily on relationships since the last time we met Mayor, and I attended the city, or the Coffee Connections at Collins Community Credit Union, so I wanted to say thank you to those folks for offering. And a reminder, I think the next one is coming up in a couple of weeks here. I believe it's at Corder Credit Union, so if you have an opportunity to attend those, please do. It's a great opportunity to connect different pieces and different relationships within North Liberty. Like Brian, I didn't get an opportunity to attend the Quail Creek Neighborhood Halloween Block Party, but I do want to comment and say thank you to Anderson and for that neighborhood. Along with the number of city slate events that we have, these are exactly reasons why I choose to live in North Liberty, choose to serve up here. It's because it celebrates our community, and it's, you know, that sense of connectedness is important. And just wanted to say thank you for those opportunities that we have, either from a city slate perspective or neighborhoods that kind of take the initiative themselves to make sure that North Liberty is a place we call home and display that on a regular basis. So I'm thankful for that. And then I would be remiss if I didn't mention, attended the Homecoming Parade at the University of Iowa, so somewhat on behalf of the city, but more on behalf of, as an alumni. And then finally, did want to say a special thank you to Brent and the Iowa City Sports Commission for their efforts with the Savannah Bananas. If you have not checked out the Savannah Bananas, please do. This is a monumental event that will be occurring in our, in our community. And so the first to extend maybe an official welcome to Jesse Cole and the Savannah Bananas on behalf of the city, and I'm looking forward to contributing to that, Brent, so thank you for your efforts there.
Thanks, Brian.
That's it.
Thank you, guys. I'll move on to item 10, which is the affirmation of the planning commission appointment. Item A is council confirmation of mayor's appointment. What do you guys think? Discussion, nod, heads? Grant, do we need anything officially on this one? Other than consensus?
A, no, I think motion to approve. Voice vote.
Sounds good.
And who?
I mean, it's cool to know who that is.
My apologies. It's not sitting right here in my packet in front of me, and I got it right here, Ryan. Thank you. I'm good. My apologies. Rachel is going to be joining our P&amp;Z meeting going forward, and she's got some experience in real estate and in her role in our community, so I'm excited to have her on board with that. So I told her not to be at the meeting tonight. She didn't have to, so no welcoming parties with that. So could I have a, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Was there a motion?
Yeah, could I make a motion?
So let's make a motion, Eric.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Paul.
Great ideas.
It's a group effort sometimes up here.
We got it.
Do I have to do the vote again?
I would.
Let's do it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go.
Just like that.
Let's move on to item 11, which is the fixed route transit program. And item A is discussion regarding fixed route transit program.
Okay, well, you'll notice that there's no action item on the agenda. It's really just discussion. Angie McConville, our special projects coordinator, is in the audience this evening, and I think you all know she, she manages all of our transit options, and there's a list of those that we are currently providing in the packet. In April of 2024, this group made a priority at our strategic planning session with Karen Kurt at ECI COG to shift transit funding from fixed route to on-demand service. Well, the fixed route service we have is through a contract with the city of Corleville, often referred to as the big blue bus. It comes, picks up early in the morning, drops off around 6:00 in the evening, so it's a long day for folks who are, who are using that for both ways. We have, over the past few months, more than few months, over the past, probably since the beginning of the year, have asked, have had different folks ride that bus to get an idea of how many people were taking advantage of that service. Not very many. I think initially, when we had a couple law enforcement officers who were on light duty, I think we had under 10, and I think Angie, you mentioned today the number was nine when you last rode. So what we're looking at is to, if this is still a priority for the city council, and really that's kind of the intent or the objective tonight, is to make sure that our staff team is moving in the direction that you folks are wishing. But the idea would be to provide some supplemental service to, to the nine or so passengers that are currently using the service and plugging them in somewhere along the line into either CAN bus or Corleville Transit or Iowa City Transit. Those details would need to be worked out, but essentially plugging them in somewhere else into that transit system to get where they need to get in the morning and PM. You've heard us talk previously that Yellow Cab is at capacity. They really can't do much more in terms of that type of transportation here. We reached out to another local cab company based right out, right out of North Liberty. They didn't have the capacity either. Angie is working with another company right now that has some smaller type buses, limos. Not that we would be providing a limo service here, but we think there's an opportunity that we could get some sort of supplemental transportation to get these folks to and from a bus stop that will eventually, that would ultimately get them to their destination in Iowa City. Those details are still being worked out, and in fact, I think Angie has an appointment next week to go visit with that. The challenge here is we have to give notice on a contract this year, but nothing, no service would start until July 1 of 2026. And so there's some juggling of logistics there, which we'll certainly manage, but it does make it a bit more challenging. So that's kind of the direction we're going, and I know that's not a lot of details. Those were, we're excavating those details right now with the company as we dig through their information and work with them. But want to make sure, I guess, or get some assurances from this group that you're still on board with this goal, and this is still a direction you'd like us to move with. So maybe I'll end there, and if there are questions, myself or Angie will try to answer them for you.
I'm going to start off with two questions for you. There's, paratransit is tied to Corleville Transit's service system. How would that be affected if we no longer used Corleville's transit service?
Angela McConville, Special Projects Coordinator. So the paratransit that we get through SEATS is linked, again, to the city of Corleville bus routes, the two, so it only serves people in the morning, and then the evening does to the two routes. If we were to remove this existing bus contract with city of Corleville, then it would revert back to our service being like the rural area. So it would provide, we, folks could get rides using SEATS paratransit more times during the day. It's just the priority of the rides given suddenly drops. So because we provide the fixed route service here, the two times a day, well, and then pathways pays for the third time, but because we provide those and SEATS, then SEATS is required by law to cover those ride requests, whereas if we move, revert back to the rural service, then they will provide rides, given that they have time in their calendar and space on the buses. So, you know, I don't know how often they have to deny the rural rides or, or cancel them, but I feel like it would expand the times that people are able to use the paratransit service to get to North Liberty. So I almost think it's a better deal.
As long as they can get the ride.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Go ahead, others, if you have questions.
But some of those folks would then be eligible for NL TAP.
In order, yeah, in order to be eligible for NL TAP, I mean, you fall under one of four categories, and most of the folks that ride paratransit do qualify. So North Liberty residents are served. It's just unfortunate that city of Corleville and city of Iowa City residents only can access North Liberty three times a day through paratransit, so it's those folks that I don't, I'm unable to provide with NL TAP.
And could you elaborate on that a little bit? You had a note about this. There's a, there's a limitation on paratransit service times that Corleville and Iowa City residents would have, because it's coming to North Liberty if they're going to the university or out to Steiner, which is an issue, but it's also creating an issue for North Liberty residents if they were trying to just access paratransit, not necessarily go into the hospital, or does that, are those issues related at all, other than just making the trips to the hospital?
Any.
More so from Corleville, Iowa City residents?
Sorry. Any trip that originates or destiny, or ends up in North Liberty is limited to those three times, either pickup or drop off. So that does affect North Liberty residents that do use SEATS paratransit. The nice thing about SEATS paratransit is that it's not limited to locations. So, you know, whereas NL TAP, the service is limited to specific locations of need. You know, if you need to go to work, SEATS paratransit will get you there. So that's when our North Liberty residents who are paratransit eligible would use SEATS mostly.
The question I ask Ryan is, and the options that we have available aside from Corleville Transit, assuming that we tried to do something different, in your, in your experience, do you see other services out there that can step in and fill this void? Because you've set down NL TAP, and Yellow Cab is maxed out, do you think we'll be able to fill this void with other services, maybe NL TAP more or Yellow Cab, for these, you know, handful of folk, a couple handfuls that are using Corleville Transit?
So one thing you don't want to do in social services is give something to people and then take it away. So I see these nine or 10 people really needing this work transport in the morning, this bus, they need it to get to work, and so I'm not interested in pulling the fixed route without having something there for them, at least as a gap year, until buying us some more time to kind of figure out maybe a more expansive service. But I feel confident in my conversations with this local North Liberty business that we can come up with something that's maybe more affordable than the city of Corleville bus and more, to be able to definitely serve these 10 folks consistently with service.
Okay. Because that's my, that's my biggest.
Yeah.
Hope also in all of this is that they can continue to get where they need to, maybe make it better for them.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Other questions?
Mayor just comments. For me, it's, it's market demand drives service, and we've, we've, we've shown consistently that the demand just isn't there for the cost. So 103,000 divided by 365 days is $283 a day that we're paying. It's not, it's not sustainable. I think we should have been out of this contract a while ago. I think NL TAP, we're seeing the success of that program because the market demands want base service, meaning I'm not going to, I don't have to go out and stand at a bus stop in the weather, in, in the snow and the rain, and wait for their timeframe. I can call a cab and go pretty much where I want, at the times that I want, with a subsidized service from the city. And I think that that's where we need to concentrate those monies. I think it's better serving those folks that have those needs. I appreciate and agree with you that we need to work with these 10 and not just pull and say, well, there's, you know, good luck on your own. We certainly don't want to do that, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've done that work already and, and worked with those folks, because we certainly don't want to do that. But it really is a math problem at this point, and it's just not sustainable.
Any other comments?
I think mine would just be the, making sure that we communicate well if it does, you know, go away. I had a personal situation where the guy got off the bus at the fire station in the middle of winter, really, really, like dangerously cold out, and was about, he, he wasn't mobile at all, and was about to just shuffle his way to Jefferson Point, which was a very long ways away, you know, so obviously I gave him a ride, but, I mean, it was, you know, I, I think there's better options, but I wanted to, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, even if it's not one of the nine or 10, you know, that we do a good job getting the word out there what their options are. So, you know, it just all of a sudden doesn't, you know, it just vanishes, and obviously we would do that, but it was just, you know, the concern that I had. But, yeah, like, like Brent said, you know, if he can just get a ride to the grocery store like he needs to, then, and there's a more, you know, cost-effective way to do that, then we should probably do that.
Yeah, I might just jump in on getting the word out. Angie spends a lot of time in people's homes when they're, and she's onboarding them for NL TAP, as an example, and provides them a list of the other services we offer. She's also done open houses at Jefferson Point and the North Liberty Living Center. And he's delivering? Have you been, he's living? Yeah, and so we're really trying to hit that where we think the hotspots would be. So, and then, of course, obviously, we have this stuff available on our website, but a lot of folks who might use this aren't, may not be internet savvy. a lot of folks who might use this aren't, may not be internet savvy or may not be interested in using the internet. So that's why we're trying to get out into the community. And I'll just, I know for a fact that while it takes a lot of time to do this, folks are really appreciative of Angela's efforts when she's meeting with them and walking them through how these processes work.
Fantastic.
The downfall of the multiple systems and the multiple gap programs in our area with different transit, and so cities running different hours, costing different prices, you know, you're eligible for this, knowledgeable for this, this is the pickup for this, you know, it leads to a lot of complications in our system, and I really...
I'm trying to advocate for a more regional system. I think that that would help us, too. So as we think, you know, ECI Cog and transit, maybe thinking more regionally would actually help North Liberty in the long run, so... My voice only goes so far, so.
Well, I think that 380 Express is an attempt for a regional service there. So we're eventually, may eventually be a destination for that, and it's something that we need to put our money where our thoughts and ideas and hopes are.
I kind of agree with Brent here that I don't think this should continue. And I'm not, and I appreciate, Ryan, your trust in Kelly, but if the contract doesn't give us the right, or give him the right to give us an extension, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, as far as the notice to terminate goes. And I think if we're not going to make a decision before November 1, we have to be prepared that this is going to go on for next year. So I'd be in favor of, I understand that we don't have anything in place, but if we're going to move, we have to move.
Does the potential exist, we don't have anything in place by November 1, can we always call them back up afterwards, say, "Hey, you know what? We weren't able to find a solution that fit our needs. Can we now do a six-month or another 12-month contract with a different date?" I don't know.
We can certainly ask, but I think the challenge is there's a lot of coordination with these routes.
Yeah.
It's not just the North Liberty piece of the route. They have a route that runs and picks up people all the way down 12th Avenue. I do know that route isn't overly filled either, overly busy. And so it's not, it's unfortunately not just as easy as making any changes. It also involves potentially schedule changes, and they have some union contracts that require advance notice on some of those things. So Kelly was comfortable, I know Eric's not comfortable, Kelly was comfortable giving us an extra month. I think when we approved this agreement years ago, they wanted that, an earlier timeframe of notice to accommodate some of the...
So they can do their planning.
Yeah. But we could also, I mean, I can visit with Kelly a little bit more. We could give them a notice to terminate and let them know, maybe we'll, if you're, we'll let you know by December if we want to reverse that termination. I don't know if that's...
I mean, there's nothing in the contract that says either way. And how it's written is notice by November 1 of the year before in order to cancel as of June 30 of the following year. There's nothing else in there that says what you can or can't do. You can also, you know, you can ask for more, but the terms might change, which I think is, that's the essential thing, is the deal might not be the same deal.
Yeah.
And I don't think anyone can tell you anything more definitively than that. And that's it. And so there might be something, that might be time to do, make any number of changes or come up with other solutions, or it might not. But that's all the language that there is to work with.
Thank you. So it feels like we're on the cusp of separating and with a pretty good idea on solutions, whether we give this notice in November or December, probably the same outcome, same amount of work that you're going to need to do before June 30.
I'm sorry to say, I mean, giving it in December is not sufficient for the agreement. You have to give...
As it sits now. Unless we... No, I know that, the 30-day extension is what I'm referring to.
Which doesn't exist in the contract. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Right, right, right. No, no, that's great. What I'm getting at is, does it, is there any reason? I see a smiling, nodding face from Angela that we just don't make this motion to dissolve it by November 1.
That was my thought, Mayor. Coming into tonight, not understanding all the work that she had already done in reaching out to those 10, it sounds like we've done due diligence there. You've had those relationships for a long time and know our systems, and that was my one concern, having that conversation from Angela tonight is, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I think that also addresses Paul's point as well, as far as communication. You've got an established relationship with...
I don't have an established relationship with the 10 yet, but I've, that's, I've identified the folks, but I kind of, I feel like there's a chicken and egg moment here, like, do I start moving and getting, you know, communicating with them or wait for this to happen? You know, what's, what's the transition there? So I'm, I've been kind of waiting to see what you guys want to do first before.
So really, if we say today or next week, or in the next meeting, that we would like to stop the Big Blue Bus, and it would not take effect until next July, so we'd have seven months to come up with a better plan, and I think everybody's kind of trying not to literally throw the people who ride the bus under the bus and not have a way to work and stuff. So, but I think we could probably figure out something for nine or 10 people by then that doesn't cost $103,000 a year.
This took a turn that we weren't expecting tonight.
That's...
But I think it's, we're going to get to the answer anyway. So what sort of action do you need from council?
Well, tonight was just discussion. There's no action item on the agenda. So we'll bring back in the next agenda, Grant and I'll talk about what we need to do to terminate that. We'll have it on this next agenda. I'll reach out to Kelly, give him a heads up that we'll be talking about this again.
So you're good with the consensus, obviously reading the face of sitting attorney. It's not actionable tonight because it was not posted.
Right.
So...
Right.
Okay.
You'll need to have a motion at a meeting that says what's on the agenda.
What I, Angela, if I could ask, I'm looking through the packet here, and there's potential ideas to enhance, expand transit services. By the next meeting, is it possible to have just a quick executive summary or recommendation on what you would do, even if the notice, you know, like, we believe this and we have this much confidence that this will be the best path and with some costs? That way, we have a full, comprehensive, informed decision when it does come to opportunity to vote?
I can definitely come up with a transition plan.
Thank you. Including communication, to Paul's point. Thank you.
Communication plan, yeah.
Can I just add to, this is not about fixed route transit being bad in any way. I just want to make clear that it certainly has a place. We may not be able to support it with two times a day that are maybe not convenient for a lot of people, but I think it will have a place in North Liberty in the future because we're going to have to do something different than, we can't just call caps for everyone going forward. So, I mean, that's, transit is important, and it's something that we need to do. It's just, this didn't work out, and we need to look at other options.
I think really the whole transit kind of, everywhere, it seems to be moving to different types of things, and especially, I think we were talking about, in Texas, some of the places were doing more of this fixed route going away and then more of a semi-demand responsive. So instead of like, this is one route, you know, we're going to go along this road and grab people as we go. And I think they're scheduling things for that now that we actually already exist, like applications and stuff, so.
Yeah, we're running the pilot program for Trip Connect right now, which is on-demand using an app, and it's, we're getting a lot of really interesting feedback and data from that, so hoping, and that serves, you know, we have larger lots here, and it's, there's not really natural gathering spaces for, in high-density areas here where a bus stop could be placed. So it's just, you know, everybody is going to have to walk a mile to the nearest bus stop, and they're just not going to use a fixed route. So, yeah, finding ways of providing service to people because there are people who work who can't drive, so how do we get them to work?
Eric, you compelled me to speak up with you on this because this has been something was probably here when we approved this bus with the intent of getting folks out, and it's been a wonderful experiment. And to say again what Eric said, it's not that we don't want it, it's just that we have, we believe there are better ways, there are more efficient ways for this to happen. So, and that's what experiments and trying to work in this area have led us to. So it's not going to go away helping folks get to work or grocery stores or doctor's appointments, it's just going to be in a different format and hopefully better for them and a better experience for them and for us as well. With that, are there any other questions or comments on this idea? And we'll have this formally on next council meeting. Okay. Thank you all. We'll move on to item 12, and Angela, thank you too for getting here tonight.
Thanks for all the work.
Item 12 is Trail Projects. Item A is Resolution Number 2025-113. This is a resolution approving the services agreement between the city of North Liberty and Shaive Hattery, Inc. for the 2026 Trail Improvements Project. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Park. Do you guys have any questions about this? Got some trails to construct. All right. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 13 is Green Belt Trail Part 5, and Item A is Resolution Number 2025-114. This is a resolution approving the final plat for Green Belt Trail Part 5, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Leibold. Any questions on this? Good, Brian. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 2025-115. This is a resolution approving the surety agreement for Green Belt Trail Part 5 between the city of North Liberty and Green Belt 56 LLC. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 14 is Mickelson, second. This is Item A, Resolution Number 2025-116, a resolution approving the final plat for Mickelson 2nd Edition, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Smith. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. And Item B is Resolution Number 2025-117. This is a resolution approving the surety agreement for Mickelson 2nd Edition between the city of North Liberty and MLDC, Inc. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by Leibold. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is Watts First, and this is Resolution Number 2025-118. This is a resolution approving the final plat for Watts First Subdivision, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Leibold. Questions on this one? We're screaming through these things. Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 16 is Elected Officials' Ordinance, and this is the second consideration of ordinance Number 2025-20, an ordinance amending Chapters 15, 17, 19, 21, and 30 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances, increasing compensation of elected officials and modifying procedures for appointment and oversight of certain internal positions. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Wason. Do you guys have any questions, comments on this?
Mayor just comment, again, for maybe new listeners, it's never comfortable when you vote to raise your own salary. However, it's been 25 years since we've done this, and it's well overdue.
Anyone else? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Any old business out there? New business? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Park.
Second.
Seconded by Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.